It's five thirty, we'll get started, call the order, ask stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of North America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Gerson.
Present.
Counselor Trask.
Present.
Counselor Gorley. Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Present.
Go ahead and at this time, go ahead and show Counselor Gorley is just going to be late, but the whole present for the meeting. Starting off the discussions, the work session regarding vacant commercial buildings, so I'll let you take it over.
Hey, so just to recap, how we got here, the request of council, staff did some research into regulations that could be added to improve the vacant building situation. We presented those findings to the council, the previous council meeting, and council voted to conduct a work session to look into and discuss more thoroughly any potential changes. First, I'll talk about the current status, then some of the problems that we're having with the existing existing situation. Talk about goals or what we would like to accomplish. I'll go over some options, have a discussion of the resources we have for enforcement, and then we can talk about any next steps you may want to take. So we have a vacant building ordinance in place now, it was adopted in January twenty twenty one. It requires owners of vacant buildings and commercial and industrial zones to register their properties, maintain the property, which includes weeds, landscaping, keeping the roof in good repair, exterior walls, doors and windows need to be sound, they need to remove graffiti promptly, there's a few other little things. They also need to secure the building, inspect the building on a monthly basis, that's on the honor system, it's purely up to them how to do that, we don't directly do the inspections. They also are required to have a local building manager, local meaning at least Albany and Corvallis area would be needed for that. This was put in place right before the pandemic, and I would say that that's has had a negative impact on enforcement. It has kind of, there have been some hiccups in staffing during that time. So some of the problems that we have, that we're continuing to experience is just because a vacant property is registered does not mean it will soon or ever be occupied. Registration of a vacant property does not mean it will look nice. Some properties seem willing to talk with the city about their property, but not, but they don't talk to any potential lessees. And some buildings appear vacant, but are not, some are used for storage, which is requires a conditional use permit in the downtown area. And there's one, there's one that I know of that is used as a private art studio. So, but they still appear vacant. So, at this point, I would recommend a discussion about what goals the council would like to have for the, for vacant buildings, obviously, we would all love to see them occupied with vibrant businesses, but other than that, up to that point, there's a lot of leeway in what goals you have. If the goal is fully occupied property, it's, we're not going to be able to regulate our way to that. If that depends too much on the market, depends on demographics and our community be having the draw that retailers want, and typically that's people, and preferably people who have plenty of extra money. Commercial real estate, let's see, however, we can still improve with code changes if there's a targeted goal, so if you want to target appearances or that property owners have a plan for what they want to do with the property, things like that, we might be able to get there. Punitive measures, I wouldn't recommend. When they're designed, when you try to force property owners to sell or lease to another party, that could lead to litigation. Court might view such regulations as a taking, which would require just compensation, so we do need to be careful how we, how we get into this, because we're, we are getting into property rights. We push too hard, it could be viewed negatively in a So I think at this point, staff really could use some direction from the council on what, what are your goals, what, if you could have, I mean, obviously, we know that we all want a vibrant community, but what would you like to see, what are the most important things to you when it comes to downtown?
Well, I'd, I'd like to share some insight on some of these buildings, and this may give some insight to the counselors and their decisions and some things to think about. As I don't have the answer to the problem, I just know I've communicated and I've talked to a few of these individuals and how you bring them to the table is the challenge, okay? First of all, I have Joy Skye, she owns the, the building next to Dairy Queen, okay, she tried to sell it. She tried to get creative, how she go about sell it, but basically what she came back and has mentioned is because of capital gains, it would tear her apart trying to unload that building, okay? In other words, the capital gains would eat her alive, and that's why she's looking at options to what, what to do with that building, okay? You have, what I was just been told is, and I, this needs to be probably verified, but that boutique downtown was owned by the Victors, now apparently Moda just bought it. So now they own pretty much, other than Henry Walthies as part of that building, they own, and that one that's going to be the pub, they own the block, okay? How do we bring them to the table is a good question, because Moda says, oh yeah, we like to lease them, but we haven't seen anything. And personally, I think there's a lot of tax incentive reasons why a lot of these vacant buildings stay empty. And there's no advantage for them to, to, to lease, other than the tax incentives. Now, I know, and I, and I've been told to leave, not to mention names, but there's two businesses that came to Sweet Home. And they looked for open building here in town, and they were two lucrative, very lucrative businesses. And they looked at every open building in town. And the problem was, the ones that were willing to sell, were asking two times the value of the building. So what's up with that, I mean, other than it's a tax incentive? They, they finally gave up, said, I can't come to Sweet Home because I can't find a building in Sweet Home, but it's weird because we have all these empty buildings down, okay? We have pretty much, and I'm probably going to be close, other than the Giles situation, you've got basically, in my opinion, about four individuals that really have the ninety percent of the empty buildings in town. You have Victors, you have Jeremy Totten, which is one billion, I'll get into him in a second. You have, and you can fill in the blank, I know his name is Andy, but I'm not sure of his last name.
Snegrev.
Yeah, he owns a lot of those empty buildings downtown. And then the Moda, again, owns a lot. Now, I don't know how much Brad Newport used to own several of the buildings in town, but I don't know if he unloaded most of, not all.
I'm not aware.
But then you got the Victors, so when you look at who the players are, who's got all these empty buildings in town, why aren't they not opening their mind in, in saying, okay, let's do something for our community, let's go ahead and lease or do something to So here, we're trying to come up with trying to punish or try to, to do something to get our downtown viable again. It's these individuals that are holding up the game, and that's, that's the frustration. When I met with Jeremy Totten, basically, he's a follower, not a leader. That was the impression I got, he does not want to invest in Sweet Home, he didn't want to have any new Sweet Home, he's upset with Sweet Home, he's waiting for someone in Sweet Home to do something before he takes action. He has no intention of doing anything with Skyline, and that's his exact words to me in a meeting. So here you got all these people that are just saying, I'm gonna sit on my building no matter what. You've, it's not that the businesses are not out there to come to Sweet Home, because they are, there was two very viable business, and not counting one that Counselor Coleman's were too. You've got businesses that do want to come to Sweet Home, and they, they're looking for building, empty buildings. But you got these main alcohol players, they're just saying tax incentive, or for some reason, no matter what, you're never going to get them to come to play. So is the answer to punish them more, I don't know if that will be the answer, that may even make them think twice, even do something even in the future, moving forward. So I just wanted to share my, my insight on this, and so if the counselors got ideas moving forward to how to get these guys to come to the plate, I'm open, but we're on a standstill with quite a few of these individuals, so.
So Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't think punishment is the answer either, but I think that is that we do need what has been called in some of this information that we have, a vacant property plan. A plan that is based upon the things that we as a council think are important in our city. And we do have this, what we have in place, that apparently, when we put it in place, we talked about the fact that we didn't want a registration fee, because we wanted people to be free to register and comfortable with registering. I don't know what percentage have registered.
The problem with that is that some, again, it goes back to that problem of some properties looking vacant, but are not actually vacant, so being able to come up with a percentage of how many are registered, you gotta have a baseline of how many total properties there are, and how many total that are vacant. The ones that we know are vacant, I'd say we have a pretty high percentage are registered.
Okay.
With the city now, but in, in particular with Mr. Victor's properties, the claim from them is that they're in use. Now, those are probably in use as storage, which is something that requires a conditional use permit, which I don't believe exists for any of those properties. But that's, that's the claim at least. So the only way to really crack down on that would be for the city to take more active role in inspections of those properties. And if you get into that, then it does, it would require additional resources to actually do that. Now, you could, you could have the fee cover that. Say, yes, you have to have it registered so often, or have it, have it inspected so often, and this is your inspection fee. So that the city could afford it. But my understanding is that some of those are, are occupied in some way.
If I'm not mistaken, economic development has been a goal of ours forever, right? I mean, it's been one of our top priorities forever, and it just, to me, doesn't seem to be getting anywhere, or at least slowly, maybe too slowly is word. So I don't have a solution, I, but I do think we have some ordinances that maybe we could look at. You know, I don't know, but I, I I definitely do not think that we should have empty buildings for twelve to fifteen years in a downtown area.
So Mr. Mayor, if I may, can we require that the businesses get their own inspection and not have the city in the middle of that, and then submit this inspection to us?
So right now, the ordinance does require an inspection, but it's kind of a, it's more of an honor system, they have to, when, when requested, they're supposed to provide information about when they have inspected it, but it's kind of they themselves doing the inspection. The intent behind it was to make sure that they're aware of what's going on inside their empty building, and whether it's been breached, whether there's any squatters, et cetera. If we beefed up the inspection part, we could essentially, depends on how often you have inspected, but you could say, say you required a, an annual inspection, right? If you have a building inspector, inspect that, for most of these buildings, you're talking maybe an hour, maybe two, two, for a professional to inspect it, and so I think the city could probably find a reasonable price for that kind of service. And that could be, that same price could be passed on as the fee to that property, so it's, that's certainly something that we could look at.
Okay, the other question I have is, or you asked about goals, the goal ultimately, I think, is for us to have a vibrant downtown. But as you've stated, there's some complications with that, we don't want to get too much into property rights, but when people are sitting on property that intentionally, and it's property that's looks in disrepair, I think we can address the appearance of the property, the old signs. Is that something that's mentioned in our ordinance, or can we expect them to remove those old signs?
Our ordinance does not require the removal of old signs. I've looked around, other ordinances that I've come across do require any advertisements or signs of previous businesses that those be removed. I think at the same time, you'd want to include some rules on what those are replaced with, because if you have a framed sign, and they just take that translation part out and leave it empty, then it looks worse. You'd want to have it replaced with something blank.
Yeah, there are lots of examples of that in these documents here. The repair of the buildings, I know that there's been some inspections done on the outside, but the buildings themselves on the interior as in disrepair, and that's why some of these businesses are having a hard time getting into them because of the cost that they're people are asking, but also then because of the massive extensive costs in fixing the buildings up. So I don't know if there's something that can be done, I mean, that's why I'm asking about inspections, if we can look at them further.
So right, right now, they are required to have a, a, a sound roof, and not any leaks, should be watertight.
How does the city determine that?
That would be based on the inspection, and so again, this is, this is one of the areas that our ordinance is weak, in that it, it depends too much on the honor system. And so we would, that's something that could be improved with that inspection process. But it also, it requires, you know, any windows need to be in lockable, uncracked condition and doors, and to my, from what I've seen, I don't think we have an issue with broken windows and broken doors, but one of the worries is that if you push too hard in one area, people react in ways that you don't expect, and so if we did work in that area, we'd have to ensure that we don't just start removing windows entirely and boarding them up, and saying that's the wall now, because then you have a bunch of buildings without any glazing at all, and that looks worse.
Yes.
So we do need to be careful where we push and make sure that we add the right regulations in the areas.
I, I hear you, I also know that some of these buildings have been emptied since I moved here, which was thirteen years ago. The, the few examples I read within here, one of them included having the vacant buildings have contact information posted on the windows. I like that idea, not just because it encourages people to communicate with owners themselves, but also if somebody's interested in the building, like that building there, I think it looks great. It doesn't, you don't necessarily even know it's empty, but if there's contact information there, that owner might actually have somebody who would like to rent that space. I think it could benefit the owner as well.
And that, that's actually one where we, we could better enforce, because there is a, there is a contact information requirement now.
I thought so, okay. Yeah, I think that would be great to get that. Okay, that's it.
So we have tools that we're not using, right? And what are other cities doing? Because not all cities look like our downtown, so they must be have ordinances or a process that is being effective.
So first off, there are cities that aren't in our same position, and, and have either more commercial activity, or they have a downtown association that takes a more active role in making those buildings appear that they're occupied. But when it comes to communities that have vacant building ordinances, the ones that I found in Oregon are fairly similar to ours, there's not a lot more that they're doing aside from some of them charging fees, and some of them requiring liability insurance, or some kind of vacant building plan. If you look nationally, there are other, there are other options that, and I can cover those in some of the options that I've come across. But the, you have appearance standards that they go into. And more stringent rules when it comes to, the inspections are handled by the city. They have a, a city official doing the inspections and making a determination, so those are some common areas, common ways that other cities are beefing things up a little bit.
I know we talked, I know we talked about Blair, that again, I go back to these owners of, I don't know if this has ever happened, but we're not talking about a lot of, lot of owners here, we're talking to two, three big alcohol, I like to call them players, that are involved in the way our downtown looks. Have we ever brought to the city hall and said, I don't see, what can we do to get you to put something in that building, to lease it, to sell it, to do something, have we done that?
Well, I had a meeting with them.
Yeah, just sit down and.
We, we haven't, we, we, I have developed some relationships with some of these folks, but there hasn't ever been like a you know, a regular meeting or anything like that called to try to, to move things forward there. But that's, there is much more we could do relationship wise, that does take, it takes time and it takes energy.
Because my thought is, again, if you bring them to the, the table and find out what it would take for them to lease it, sell it, or do something, we may find out there may be something there that we may be able to help as a city to make moving forward. So there may be nothing we can do as a city, but there might be something from a state or county level that we can to tap into and say, okay, let's, let's team up, let's see what we can do to put someone in that building. Again, I had two businesses that were looking for, for buildings. And the ones that they looked at, one, and I'll pick on Moda, wouldn't even talk to them.
Were they, were their buildings that they were actually, they'd seen the inside that they were interested in?
Yeah.
Or they just couldn't?
They were interested in, in storefront downtown. But again, what's it gonna take, we're not talking like five, ten, fifteen people here, we're talking two or three. Bring them to the plate and say, what can we do? But, and then maybe there's incentive, maybe there's something, they'll tell us, and say, wow, we didn't think of it, maybe that will work, maybe, hey, we, maybe let's take a look at that, maybe instead of trying to reinvent the wheel, try to force them, maybe there's something as simple that we can bring them to, to the plate and say, okay, we'll do it.
And I, and I would say, I completely agree, one of the things is, if you're, if there's only a couple people that you have a problem with, changing the rules or adding regulations is probably, that, that cover everyone is probably not the best way to go about it.
Exactly.
It's kind of going after a fly with a sledgehammer. You, you do want to, you can have a more surgical approach when it comes to just working the relationships.
See, I know, for example, Andy, and I can't remember pronouns, anyway, he's got some grand ideas, I mean, from what I've, I've hearing some of his ideas. You know, he's had a little bit of a butt heads with another business owner, but that's, we should set aside, okay? But the bottom line, he has some ideas, but I know his finances are very tight. So a lot of his ideas, he doesn't have finances to move forward with some of his, of his empty building. Maybe there is Business Oregon, or someone's got something that said, hey, Andy, we, we can help you out, let's see what we can do here. So, I don't know.
Their Business Oregon does have programs when it comes to infrastructure and improvements in streets that are needed to get it a, an employer in. Those are typically geared toward industrial developments. They don't have much in the way of commercial retail type programs. So that's, that's the, the limiting factor there, is that most of the available hope that I've seen at the state end is focused on industrial job creation and not commercial retail.
Again, I'm just spitballing, I'm just thinking, there's ideas that we can maybe bring, bring these guys to the table and see what we can do.
So I have a question, you mentioned doing inspections once a year, but we're talking, is the plumbing working so it can be? And is it, you know, a safe environment, or the fire, or smoke? This, the roof, all these things, and with our weather and stuff, I don't, I'm not opposed to having an inspection of buildings that aren't being rented, because no one would know the damage as quickly as one that's rented, possibly every six months. I think that's reasonable, given all the things that can go wrong with the safety of our city, because these buildings are next to each other, and other businesses rely on that. I, I am, I'm going to reiterate again, I'm concerned that we have codes that are tools we're already using, and not enforcing. And so that does need to be addressed, and I, I apologize that I was late, I was stuck in traffic. So have we identified why somebody buys retail property and then doesn't ever intend to make it retail viable? Why is it that they're doing this when there's other property available that's not on Main Street? You know, why aren't they building a shop somewhere and not paying the same taxes and everything, and you've seen it?
That's the tax incentive, so in other words, if I buy these, these buildings and then leaving empty, I can show them as a loss, I didn't, you know, not making any income over here in renting. So I have a business over here, it's making a lot of profit, I use these losses to offset.
Well, you could also rent them out for a lot less than what is market value, and still show a substantial loss.
I agree with you, and they should, but.
It's, it's similar to trying to find the reason why people are homeless. You're, you're gonna, if you interview ten people, you're gonna find ten different reasons. The same thing with anybody who buys property that they don't, I mean, most of us, we buy property because we need a place to live. But when you're getting into commercial property, everybody has a different angle of what they might, some of them might be looking for that tax shelter. Some of them are looking to eventually start a business, and they just haven't done it yet, or their fortunes haven't gone as, as well as they hoped they would, there's a there's a lot of different reasons you're going to find for, for different things, I know with Andy Snegrev in particular, I've talked, we've talked with him, he's come to our counter many, many times to talk about various ideas that he's had for his property. And, and they change fairly regularly depending on what the, what resources can be put into it. And then I've tried to line them up with, with interested parties when it comes to buildings, in particular, the, the old restaurant that he has. But for whatever reason, those have not worked out. There, with Lamota, they have told me in the past, when I've talked to them, that they consider themselves real estate developers. It very much looks like they are, that they have a, a business model of acquiring property that's on state highways. And that's probably a, a good business model for, for your investments, because you know there's plenty of traffic by those, those buildings. For probably many reasons, they just haven't done anything with those properties. It could be that they're speculating and, and sitting on them for a while until they feel like can get a decent return off of them. It could be that they're eventually going to, to do some work and they just haven't, because when I talked to them last, they were basically saying that with the pandemic, they just hadn't, weren't going to, to develop anything, because it, they're required, it, it depends too much on, on foot traffic coming in, so they weren't, wasn't the time that they were going to do.
I would caution, and we need to stay away from it, because of the failure rate of businesses, when somebody has bright ideas and all of these things, we love them and we want them to be successful, but we, they
But we, they need to find their own way to make that happen. Our ability to, to support, making businesses look good on the outside is one thing. They need to do their interior stuff themselves. I also think that if they're not using it as zoned like it's supposed to be in our homes, that would matter. That would matter if we were misusing zoned property. And so I think for them, they should be held to just as high, if not a higher standard, because they're on Main Street and the community and the other businesses depend on them. And so, but that is on them. I, I want, anyway, I have a, a thought of the mode of building and what possibly they might be able to buy into on that. But the other ones, I agree, if they've been sitting empty for five years, they should go into a separate classification of chronically, um, vagrant, you know? Vagrant, they're hanging out on Main Street. Anyway.
A building could be loitering, but I guess.
Yeah, that's exactly what's happening.
I may, I, I don't want to punish them necessarily, but we, I think that, I think that we got a few options and, this unfortunate part, and the sad part is there's not one of those buildings that has a for sale sign in it. Not a one, not a lease, nothing. That's, that's disturbing to me. And then on the other side of that, if we're gonna have to have code enforcement, it's gonna cost money. And where are we gonna get that? We can't put our code guy on there because he's busy doing all other stuff. So, and then I, I did, I did not know that we had people storing things in, in buildings on Main Street. I didn't know that. And if it's not, if it's not in the code enforcement, then it shouldn't be done. And I don't know who they are, I, you know, uh, but anyway, I, I, we've got a lot of ifs here.
One of the, uh, real estate agents in town, um, I talked with her at one point, uh, last year, and she was talking about trying to find a place for her own office. And she said that she toured almost every single vacant building on Main and Long Street. And, and her conclusion, and, and her husband, I believe, is a building contractor or has experience. And so he was with her, gave her all sorts of input about what would be necessary to repair or, uh, how much each place would cost to make it into just a basic office. So nothing more than an office and a bathroom. And the conclusion they came to is all these places that they had toured were just, would have taken too much work to make it pencil out. And that's why they ultimately end up where they are now. But the frustrating thing is a lot of retailers, what, what they're looking for when it comes to moving in some places, they're looking for what's called a vanilla shell. Vanilla meaning plain. They want a plain white box on the inside. And all that is, is it means there's a bathroom, there's big open space, and all they have to do is bring their stuff in and slap a coat of paint on the wall and put ever, put up whatever decor that they want to put up and bam, they have their functioning business. We don't have any vanilla shells in town. Every single shell we have is not vanilla. I don't want to use a different word, but it's, it's not vanilla. So trying to find a way that encourages that, uh, and gives people what they're looking for. The problem is that's really expensive. Uh, we, we put the money that we have on the outside, uh, stuff, which is good. The inside needs a lot of help too. And that's, that's the challenge is trying to line up those things with the property owners or help them realize the value that they would have if they made their property a vanilla shell. It's, it's basically curb appeal on the inside and that's what retailers would.
Well, the, up to now, they're using the pandemic as the, as a reason, I, I think moving forward is gonna be the inflation. So it's, we're gonna catch 22 situation. So I guess moving forward with this work session, do, what do we maintain this ordinance, change the ordinance or what's the council's thoughts on moving forward?
I have some options that we can talk further about. All right. So, um, we talked about illegal uses already. Uh, and so certainly increased enforcement of our existing ordinances. We do have some that, uh, parts of our ordinance that we're not actively enforcing as much as we could, and we definitely need to work on that. That's the question of, of staff time and, and dedicating the staff time. I think that it, we can certainly do much better and that there are more effective ways to utilize our time. I mentioned illegal uses. We haven't focused on that in the past, typically when it comes to code enforcement. Code enforcement has been focused on those, uh, you know, junk on the outside of your home or tall grass and weeds and things like that. Hasn't typically looked inside buildings to see what's, what's being done with those buildings, but it is technically a violation of our development code to have a use such as storage in the downtown commercial zone. And so we can, we can be more active in, in enforcing that. That is also though, going to be, uh, a time suck in that it, it will encounter plenty of resistance and there will, they probably need to be, we need to be willing to have something go to court and be resolved in, in our municipal court. But there's, if we do our job right, there's no reason why we wouldn't be successful. The law is on our side with that. It's just something that does take time and, and investment of, of staff time.
I have a question. Have we investigated, since we don't have the person and the personnel to do this, with sharing a partnership with Lebanon? And, um, the code enforcement pieces so much would, if we tracked it, because I'm sure we'd be able to track it, that use that revenue and, or whatever to help offset those costs. But just contract with them so many hours a month.
We haven't looked into that. Uh, that's, that's a possibility. The, the question is where do you, what, what, we need to be pretty clear about what tasks we would want to contract out. Because right now, all of our code enforcement is handled by one person and it's all mixed up. So residential, commercial, all that stuff. It all goes to that one person. So if we contracted out, would it be for everything? Would it be for just kind of downtown stuff? We'd need to make that clear, but, uh, it's, it's a possibility, something we can look into. My only hesitation, I think, would be, one, the money you mentioned, you know, we set the fees to, to work with that, uh, and I, I get that. But, um, I'm not a fan of contracting out code enforcement, mostly because, um, if I'm gonna be, if I'm gonna be, uh, have enforcement on my case about what I'm doing, I want it to be my own town and not some other town. But that's just my own personal view.
Yeah, I'm not actually looking at it like maybe contracting out, but shared because their revenue of that person might go down a little bit. And I know they have their own things, but we're just be looking at, um, businesses that are being vagrant and having that extra support and, um, code enforcing maybe, it might be the better term for that. Okay.
Um, and, and, but I think certainly if we were to go the route of fees to support the program, that's where you would, you would recoup some of that work. Is especially if you go into doing something that's easily quantifiable like inspections. And have the, the fee pay for that staff time.
Mr. Mayor, I gotta, I, you know, if you drive down Main Street in Lebanon, you don't see very many buildings that are empty. So they're doing something that's different than what we're getting done here. That's what I think. Uh, I haven't counted them, but even when you go down there, it looks like there's a lot of, a lot of their businesses or their buildings are, are being used.
They also have an active downtown association.
Yeah.
Uh, which is one of the keys, I think.
The gal who does our banners, um, used to be their president, but she's active in that group. And they do, they, they function very actively, the whole turkey thing on Main Street, all those things they were doing, that's who's doing it.
They do a great job. And I, I, my family and, and I have gone to some events that they've had there and it's very clear that they've done a good job of organizing all the, the businesses to support each other in that. You, it does take a critical mass to get to that point where you can have that downtown association. Unfortunately, we're not there yet. But it's one of those chicken and the egg problems where you gotta have that support in order to attract those solid businesses. But then you, you need those solid businesses to provide that support.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not in favor of having ordinances that we can't enforce. I think I've mentioned that before. I'm concerned that we've passed an ordinance that is considered nitpicking. It whether, but when we did it, we thought it would be helpful. If it can't be enforced, it shouldn't be an ordinance for my book. Second of all, I really like Mayor Marler's suggestion that we pull together these home, these, uh, property owners and hear what they have to say. We don't know. We're sitting here hoping we can solve a problem that we really don't know the root of the problem. And, um, I think that we should have a timeline, we should set that up and it should be done.
Which ordinance is considered nitpicking? I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me explain that. So first of all, the, the ordinance I'm referring to is basically the, the development code, you know, when it comes to the actual uses of what, because right now, the way things have been, there hasn't been much enforcement. Once a building is built, we usually don't pay attention that much to what the, to the use that's going on inside that building. And so if I'm gonna go, you know, for example, if a business owner, say a business owner, you, so you own a property and you're storing stuff in that property. And maybe you used to have a business in that property, but not anymore. If you were storing that thing, that stuff there, and it was part of running a business there, then it's perfectly fine. But if you have no business there and you're, and you're storing things there, then it's a violation. It's a, it's an improper use. So, um, this is, this is something where it would be the city kind of peeking through the blinds and saying, oh, what are you doing in your property? Some property owners might consider that to be a bit invasive or, or nitpicking that, well, I don't have a business there now and you're getting on my case because of this way that I'm using my property.
So since that's not a professional term.
Perhaps.
And what we're asking is serious. I, um, actually find that insulting.
Okay.
Um, so I'm just telling you, I just.
My, my.
No offense, I just mean, it's like, whoa. Because we're trying to do something serious here and I know that they may be uncomfortable with people looking in their windows, but that's not our fault.
My intent with that term, and let me explain what I intended when I, what I'm trying to explain is that at more active enforcement in a way that we didn't enforce before is going to have blowback. And that's kind of what I'm, what I'm trying to convey, that it's, it is going to, there is going to be more conversation in the public sphere about it. And it is going to take staff time, more staff time to, to get into that area. And so the question is, how do you, how do you, are you concerned about the public blowback, one? But two, on the staff time, are there things that are, do we need to rearrange our priorities when it comes to code compliance? And say, okay, let's not worry so much about this one area where we have problems and let's focus on these vacant buildings instead. That kind of thing is what we're gonna have to determine what the proper allocation of those resources is.
Why don't we do a community survey? And see how our community feels about vagrant buildings and what should be done to address them. I think they need, I think the business owners and the community, if the, if the, I know what the answer is gonna be, we all do. I think if that might result in some change and some support in having those talks with people. Because nobody wants to be the, in, on the end of a survey when the community has repeatedly expressed frustration, anger, you know, remorse over having these empty buildings on Main Street. And I think that maybe that's a good place to start.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. So I am not a fan of any sort of enforcement. I'm more a fan of like enticing or incentives. And so as a business owner, I'm stretched really thin. I have no time to do anything that I need to do, let alone things that people expect me to do. So if we could maybe do a downtown committee or a downtown task force instead of a downtown association, and you don't like the signs that are up on the walls or whatever, go to the business and say, hey, we have a task force that are, are willing to take that down for you. Can we help you? And be a partner instead of having a ticket for a citation. Because I think a lot of people are exhausted with the pandemic, exhausted in their funds. And secondly, we have all this money sitting in this SIP account, SIP account. Give it outright $20,000 to fix the outside instead of a grant or make it to go for inside as well. I, I don't know, but it's not being utilized. We're sitting here victims of circumstance, wondering who's gonna actually do something about it. So take it upon yourself and go to the businesses and say, you're gonna help them get this done. How can we help? Instead of, we're gonna write you a fine and they're just gonna be even more resistant. So that's my suggestion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Blair, who has taken advantage of the SIP grants?
So I don't have a memorized list.
Oh, I'm sure we can all come up with some.
I can provide you, I'm just looking at the last applications that we've received this year. Point Restaurant, uh, Eastland Property Management. Those are for 2022. Last, in, in 2021, we had the Rio, um, the gentleman who's putting in the Brew Pub, uh, Sweet Home Veterinary Hospital, um, Sunshine Espresso, Mr. Wolfius, Mary Guilds, who owns a property at Ninth and Main, uh, Sweet Home Pregnancy Center, Dandy Sales, Steelhead Fitness, Valley View Logging, Freedom Hill Church, River of Life, Foster Lake Inn and Thriftway were in 2021.
Wow, that's, I'm glad to hear that list. Thank you for sharing that. There are some people that seem to know it exists and are utilizing it. I think that Counselor Sanchez is correct in that we don't want to necessarily penalize people. But I think we, we should be enforcing our own codes. And some of these codes were, like you said, were in existence before the pandemic. And my guess is some of the pushback would come because we probably didn't have much time to enforce it before pandemic started. But it is a relatively new code, but I don't think anything that's there is really that, um, egregious in that it's some basic maintenance that needs to occur. I think that we, I agree with the mayor and counselor. Gerson, sorry, Pro Tem, Gerson, that, um, it'd be great to have those people come around the table, especially, um, the three that are sitting empty. I find it ironic that Lebanon has businesses that are being used as tax write offs, but they are actively being used as tax write offs. So we got Pizza Hut and you've got Rife's Furniture, both of them take a negative profit. I mean, they, they don't make a profit during the year, but the businesses still look good. So what is Lebanon, I mean, is there anything Lebanon doing to encourage them to continue with the business instead of just closing the doors? Is there something that we could do to encourage people to use their buildings? I don't know. That's just my thoughts.
So, um, moving on to other options, because we are running short on time. Uh, appearance standards could be one area you could look at. We don't currently have any appearance standards for, for downtown. Uh, and so there's not, you know, if somebody has peeling paint, for instance, on their building, there's not really anything we can go do about that. Uh, we don't require them to be lit. We don't require anything with the old signs. Or, uh, anything like that. So that's an area we could look at. Uh, again, that's gonna depend also on, you know, the, the, the investment, whether are you doing, are we doing inspections of that property, et cetera? And how, how would we go about that? Some places have insurance requirements, just an extra, basically mainly to protect neighboring properties from any, uh, negative effects that could happen on that property and spill over onto theirs. I have heard from one property owner about, um, storm drainage from a vacant property that goes onto theirs of because of their walls right being next to each other. And that's a frustration for them. It's a, right now, it's a civil, um, a civil matter between the two property owners. So there's not anything the city can do. But if we were required from those, that vacant property owner to have insurance, it might, uh, grease the wheels a little bit more for, for that claim, uh, on their property liability. It was mentioned vacant building plans, uh, you know, uh, it's a relatively low bar, uh, not very difficult to, depending on how, how extensive you would want those plans to be. But if it's nothing more than just what is your plan for marketing your property? That at least would have, uh, get the conversation. that at least would have, get the conversation going with the property owner on on what they're doing. But it could be something larger. What are your plans for remodeling and what's the timetable, et cetera? Brings us on to fees. This initially started with a discussion about fees, and so that's where a lot of my attention was focused. Fees should be supporting the program. I, I don't recommend punitive fees, but we do need to recognize that properties that are vacant for a long time have a detrimental effect on the community. And so it may be appropriate to have a fee that takes that into account. But when it comes to some of the enforcement that we would want to do in any, any increase in that enforcement that we're not able to do right now, for example, the inspections that we already mentioned, a fee could be the way to make that, to make the city be able to run that, that program. Could be as simple as not actually including that in a fee, basically just saying you need to have it inspected by a third party. And so show us your inspection and leave it to the property owner to find their own building inspector to do that. So there's also a common practice is to have the fee escalate over time for long term vacancies. And so that is something that you could look at as well. Finally, fee waivers is a, seems to be a recommended practice among cities that charge fees. We've talked about you know, needing businesses to advertise their place for rent or we want them to improve their properties and so forth. And so you could easily have a waiver. If you have a active building permit, you be, have any fees be waived. Or if you have the, if it's something as simple as just wanting to have a for, for lease sign in the window, and you say, look, if you, if you get that up there and it's, and it's, people can contact you. You know, it's, you don't have a fee in that case. So that's certainly an option. Other areas of exemptions. I just basically said it all. So essentially, whatever, if, if somebody is making progress toward what you want them to do and making their property look better, you don't want to punish that. So that recommended that that be exempt from any, you would charge. Finally, I touched on this already. All of this is done by our code compliance officer who handles all of the code violations. So it's important to have that discussion of what's a priority in in town. Right now, his priority is tall grass and weeds because it finally stopped raining. These priorities change throughout the year. They tend to be seasonal. But if we, depending on how, how important this is compared to other areas, we may want to dedicate more of the code compliance officer's time to, to the downtown rather than the various residential neighborhoods.
Could we add to the list sprinkler systems for fire in these buildings that are vagrant, vagrant, the vacant buildings? Because I think that's something that with the heat and the different things we're having, become a greater concern. Well, you don't have anybody in that building regularly. You don't know how good the wiring is, you don't know what's going on in there. And I also would be in favor of of making the fees increase as the, the number of years that that building has maintained emptiness. But if they're demonstrating that they're cleaning it up, they're trying to rent it out, then it could be waived, it could be dropped, you know, based on the outcome.
I think that's a state code.
Regarding the fire sprinklers, that's in, if you were to build a new commercial property, you would be required to put sprinklers in. And, oh, yeah. And and when it comes to rehabbing an existing property, depending on what you're doing to that property, you're probably going to have to put those in as well. So my concern about that is that rehabbing a commercial, anything you're doing to a commercial property besides just paint, if you're doing anything at all, because it's commercial, it requires a building permit. And if you're a homeowner and you're just working on your home, you don't need a building permit for a lot of, of basic things that you might do in addition to paint. But for a commercial property, because the public is invited to that property, it's a higher standard. And so commercial rehabilitation, commercial remodeling is very, tends to be very expensive. My concern is we want to be careful how much more we put on the property owners because we, yes, we want them to be safe. But we have to recognize that they're already putting a ton. The, for example, the new windows that Mr. Minor put in, my understanding, he's the, the guy who's putting in the Brew Pub next to La Moda. That, that new door and windows that he put in, my understanding is that was $140,000. It's, it's pretty expensive. And so I, in that particular situation, I would hate to add to that because fire systems are extremely expensive to install.
Well, he's going to have a viable building when he's done. So he'll, he wouldn't have to do it because he'll have people in there. But the other thing is, is we have two people on the council that have been active in the fire department. And if there's other options for, to help with safety for our community, maybe they might know of some that other than putting a whole new sprinkler system or, you know, I am very concerned about.
Well, I think just on the fire side of that, we have a fire inspector that he, he has full access at any time to go into buildings. There's one that was near my business that he went in there and literally shut them down until they met certain requirements. So the, he has the power to just go in immediately and inspect and shut them down if they don't meet certain criterias.
Maybe, maybe we should, that's another option, I suppose, to work with the fire district to have, make sure that the vacant buildings are inspected by the fire chief or the fire fire district.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may suggest that one of the first steps we have is to get these business owners together with the admin and finance and property committee and have a discussion with them just to hear what they have to say and with staff. And, and then there, because I really agree, we don't, we don't have consensus.
So what's some of the consensus of council?
Yeah, I think that's the first step is to meet with the owners of the properties and see what is prohibiting them from upkeep or upgrade or what do they need from us instead of a stick?
Mr. Mayor, and I, I agree with Angelique, that it's, I think it's the best first step. Will we get anywhere? We don't know. But it would be nice to know what we can do to help them to make it easier. And I tell you what, a fire a fire system in there is not cheap. It is really, really expensive. So, and I'll give you an example of, of, we took a little trip down to, to the Steelhead. We didn't get in the door. We didn't get in the front door without three things that had to be fixed, not in the door. And then you have to do, but we got to get going, so.
I agree, but I'd like to revisit for businesses that have been vagrant for over 15 years. They might need to have a fire system installed because that's only fair to the community. Thank you.
I agree with that. I'm same consensus.
I'm all good.
So I will get in touch with property owners and see what I can schedule. And the consensus then was the admin property and finance committee to meet with, with.
See if they can come together in a meeting and see what we can
I mean, we can try to have like a luncheon or something to at least try to entice them to, to come.
Sounds good. Nothing further. We'll go ahead and during this work session at 6:28 and we'll go a few minutes before our next, our council meeting starts.